I'd like to close meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's our guy. Thanks bud. Alright, our first order of business is to talk to Mr. Merrick. He's got some emissions and some things he needs to say.
Thank you Mayor and Council. We'd like the Council to consider a couple changes to the agenda. We'd like to remove items 7.5, 7.6, 7.13, and 9.1. 7.5 is related to Floyd Total Security. There's some issues related to the quote for services that the Public Service Director, the City Attorney and I are still kind of working through. We were hoping to have that resolved, but by the time of the meeting, we weren't able to get that. It's not a big issue, just kind of some paperwork pieces, so we're asking that to be delayed or removed. And also 7.6, 7.13, and 9.1 relate to Lakeview Industries. The city and Lakeview agreed to pull these items from the agenda. There's some planning-related work that we'd like to kind of finish up and do, so we want to schedule that for a future meeting. We are planning to hold 6.1, the Tax Increment District Plan for Lakeview Industries. It's a public hearing. Just out of respect to the hearing, and those who may be in the audience tonight to provide testimony to the Council, we'd like to ask the Council to take that testimony, but not take any action on the Tax Increment Financing District or the associated resolution. We'll bring that back once the kind of the land use piece can run in concert with the Tax Increment Financing Plan. So again, that would be scheduled out for the Council to consider taking action at a future date. So tonight, we'd just be asking you on 6.1 to open the public hearing, take that testimony, close the public hearing, and then take no further action.
Take no further action on 6.1.
Correct.
Okay. Just any clarification from the Council on what Mr. Merrick just went through? I'm good on that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda minus items 7.5, 6, 1.3, and 9.1.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Councilmember Monroll.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mac. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports follow the direction of the presenters before Kenny Schultz.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Merrick, sorry. I just yelled Kenny Schultz.
I think we have resident comments and questions before reports.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. I was all excited for Kenny Schultz. We'll get to you. Do we have any resident comments and/or questions for any items not on the agenda this evening? Now that we just totally put you on the spot if you do. I'm sensing no. Is it okay to move forward? Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Kenny Schultz! Alright, actually, I'm gonna call up Chief Meyer first. We've got that you're giving the service recognition, but I've got a couple of stories and some stuff for him. You want me just to go?
Yeah.
Alright, well, you're gonna come up here in a second. Kenny, come on up bud. We're gonna give Kenny his helmet. We also have a plaque that was a very nice gift from the Fire Department. Kenny's been here long enough, and apparently I've been here long enough. We've got 21 years of service, and I'm not gonna step all the way down. So my wife and I first moved to Carver.
You're gonna say it.
I am a half. So Kenny, your mom's gonna appreciate this. So my wife and I were here for about a year, and we were gonna finish the basement of our house. It was not framed in, and we could tell Ryan coming framing in, and I'm like, "Well, how do you hate this thing?" I don't know what it's doing. Somebody says, "Well, Kenny Schultz, he's a firefighter." I said, "Well, cool. Will you do my basement?" He says, "Absolutely." It's like, "Oh, Kenny," and he says, "Yeah, I'll do us a side job." So he did all my ductwork downstairs. Well, the last day he was there, Wednesday afternoon, so Kenny and I were both having a few beers. At least I'm not a sport. And I said, "Hey, what do you got a lot to do about?" I said, "Hey, let's go down to Harvies." And he says, "Well, I shouldn't." I said, "What do you mean?" "Let's go down to Harvies, I'll buy you beer." He's like, "Well, I can't really go down to Harvies." I said, "What are you talking about? You look like this." He's like, "I'm 18." I'm driving on five years, and I'm gonna send him on the road to go home, and I'm gonna buy him more beer. So that was, what, 39? 39. 21 and 18.
39.
No. So, I mean, and everybody in this room knows, the commitment that Kenny's had towards the Fire Department, we've all had our battles. You have had some good ones. What, at the end of the day, what we do and what Kenny has done has made this community a much better community. A, a safer community, and B, just part of the community. Bob Reckie, a former mayor of Chaska, talks about community all the time, and the respect and the send, and giving back, not only to your friends, but to your entire community in your neighborhood. And Kenny is a perfect example of that being involved, and not just accepting the status quo, but fight back, but give some input, and an incredibly valued part of both the Fire Department and the community. A, sad to see him go, and B, happy to see him go on to greater futures. So with that, Kenny, thank you very much. We got a lot to say. I appreciate it. This is a really cool academic, and this is, I think, is the beginning of a really cool tradition. So here we go. I'm gonna put Kenny right in the middle. I have to, Chief, congratulations. You have done a lot of work there for Kenny. And you're gonna, I hope this, you're taking pictures. Oh yeah? Do I gotta stretch your side blades? We gotta hold it. You good, Mom? Alright. Mama, hi. The real mom! That is different, right? I think we should give one more applause. Sometimes those make me weepy. So, gentlemen, thank you all. And lady. My bad. Yeah, Kenny! Kenny! Are you crying yet? No. You wanna say a few words? Come on back up. I know you're big on the moment. And actually, I apologize. And actually, I apologize. I didn't offer, and Cindy brought up a really good point. You've been doing this for a long time, and please don't feel obligated. I just wanna thank, you know, the City of Carver. It was truly an honor to serve for this city. I've grown up in this city, and I want to thank the city, I want to thank Chief Meyer, Allen, everybody, and every player, every player. Had a lot of fun. Thanks everyone. Alright, thank you all. Aaron Smith. We get to talk about the Edith Ann Award. And I just talked about your wife. But it was positive.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, we will be giving out the award for 2018, the Edith Ann Award. So the Edith Ann Award began in 2015 for Property Excellence, and the award honors the work of Edith Herman and Anne Neils, who are active in part of Carver-on-the-Minnesota. And the award recognizes and honors property owners that contribute to the beauty of Carver. Previous award winners are Andy and Natalie Seberg and Bridget Kelly. The Planning Commission reviewed the Edith Ann Award at the July 19th meeting and selected 720 Debbie Court as the 2018 winner. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Karen Brinkman and her family through this process. It's been really insightful and fun. So they have lived at 720 Debbie Court for 17 years. They started their garden project as a living wall for privacy. They're on a corner, so they were able to build this beautiful, luscious plant wall that gives them some privacy. And something that is really amazing, I think, is that Karen calls her yard "the junkyard" for the neighborhood. So she'll often see people getting rid of plants, and she'll take it in and make it part of her yard. She also said that many of her plants are dividable, so if anyone's interested, stop by, ask her, she's happy to share in the wealth of her garden.
Do you have any hostas?
So some photos of Karen and her family's work on her property. These are some examples of the living wall. If you haven't been by 720 Debbie Court, I would encourage you to do so. The colors are beautiful. You can really see her time and dedication to the project. So with that, I would ask you to present the award to Karen Brinkman and Lynn Gregory for the 2018 Edith Ann Award.
Karen and Lynn, why don't you guys come out? I've had the pleasure of knowing these individuals for a while, and I would say that we started this Edith Ann Award a couple, two, three years ago, and what this really has done is given us an opportunity to recognize people going above and beyond. I think we have some people that have some great landscaping, and like me, they pay that. It's tied to the, he says, "All you gotta do is plant a bit of dirt, it doesn't hurt you, man." Bad soil. And if you ever walk by, driven by, or influenced by, by this property, you're immediately taken by it. And kind of look around, and you're looking at, you can't see the house for the beauty that it is. And this is really helping. The art of here is, and this award is really giving us the opportunity to recognize people that make a contribution to our community in a way that is really helping make our community special. So with that, I wasn't kidding, so we didn't. And the reality of this is that, so I talked to him earlier, he said he moved the lawn. So you take that, you know, I will take that, and we're gonna be cool, and handshake. Congratulations. Oh, he's, oh, he's, you wanna say something? I'm good. So I was actually kind of bummed out because I saw this on the agenda, typically what we do is we visit the property, we take some pictures with the Council, and we have a really, really cool stand, I'm assigned, and says, "The Edith Ann Award winner for the year 2018, 19, it's a good new yard. Due to the weather, it shows the weather's under 17, we will be returning, uh, I'm a hurricane. I prefer my birds. We may never hear this, and I'll bring this here." So that, you'll see, look for pictures of the property on our website, and probably Facebook or other things. So that would be, that would be a big, big congratulations. And I, very much, you guys, you know what, that's what Kenny, would you like, does that have to say anything? Chairmen, do you like to sit in the drat or not?
Alright, thank you. That's the fun stuff. We're going right back onto the community rating system with Aaron Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have some exciting news related to the community rating system, which is a program through-
Is it as exciting as the Edith Ann Award and a retiring firefighter?
No.
Okay. You guys don't have to stay for this. I'm just giving you the, Kenny's been here. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
If anybody needs a ride home tonight, I'll give them a ride, just let me know.
Wow.
Alright.
That's one word to put it all together.
Hey, check my- No, you'll just wanna get paid now. Alright, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Yep, go right after it. No, thanks.
So the community rating system encourages and recognizes floodplain management that exceeds standards set by the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP. And communities have the opportunity to reduce the flood insurance rates by increasing outreach, community education, and resources. So Mark Pastolka, Brenda Good, and I have been working this summer on updating some of our outreach, community ad resources, getting things available on our website, in the Carver County Library System, that met the criteria of the community rating system. And in 2018, we were able to reduce the flood insurance rates by additional 5%, bringing our grand total as of 2018 to 20% reduction.
Cool.
The new rate will go into-
That's exciting.
It is. Yeah.
I didn't want you to feel left out.
So the new rates will go into effect October 1st, and FEMA primarily does the literature for it, so they send it to banks, insurance agencies, those affected by the floodplain insurance.
Do we need any action on this?
No, it was just an update.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
For the insurance company, is this something that you will need to bring up to them, or will they already have this information and know when you come in with your address?
Sure. So we have been pretty active over the past couple weeks, giving them quite a bit of information. Some of the criteria was, is that they needed to have floodplain information available at their offices. So I suspect they know that we're working on this, but FEMA will reach out to them formally.
Okay. And then are we going to reach out, or how are we going to get the word out possibly to homeowners in the downtown area who deal with that?
So those who have flood insurance will be, FEMA will send a mailer.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Alright. So that brings us to Mr. Steiman. 6.1, we're gonna talk about the Tax Increment District and Plan, but take no action, and answer and open a public meeting afterwards.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council.
I'd like to tie.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Paul.
Sorry, Larry.
So I'll provide some information here upfront prior to your opening of the public hearing and taking public input. So this is for the public hearing today for a proposed Tax Increment District, District 1-9, Lakeview Industries Project. There we go. Learn how to use the clicker here. So this is the purpose of the presentation. We'll go over all of these items. I'll overview what TIF is. You already have a lot of that information, but for the public's benefit. We'll outline the development scenarios that have been discussed, the project boundaries, how this project qualifies as an Economic Development Tax Increment Finance District, our development assumptions and TIF projections, budget authority, and next steps. So what is TIF? TIF is basically a method of capturing new tax base and new taxes as a result of new tax base resulting from new development and redirecting it to pay for public improvements related to the development. There's a fixed term for capturing new taxes. In this case, that's eight years. Then, after that's completed, then the new development, the new development's tax base is added to the overall tax base of the city. If you want to be terrifically bored, you can read state statute there. It's a, TIF is basically a gap financing tool, so when an entity shows up and provides financial information, and they've done everything that they could to finance their project, and there's still a hole or a gap, then most often, tax increment would be used to fill that. Depending upon the year created, there's a whole lot of different compliance requirements. I think TIF was created back in like 1972, and so that the statute continues to grow and grow. The Economic Development District we're talking about this evening is one of the simpler districts. It's a tool that's used mainly by cities and counties, and it obviously, it provides an incentive for economic development to occur. There's five primary types of development districts. We won't discuss all of them. The last one listed here, the Economic Development District, which has a term of eight years, that is the district which you're reviewing this evening. These are typical eligible costs by statute. Public improvements, roads, curb gutter, sewer, water, infrastructure such as that, land acquisition, correcting soils, doing demolition and site preparation work, relocation is also an eligible cost, financing fees, and administrative costs up to 10% are all eligible uses of tax increment. And these are the public improvement costs, which I basically just listed. Streets and roads, utilities, bridges, and interchanges, parking, sidewalks, your basic public improvements. Financing project costs, so there's a couple of ways that you're allowed to finance project costs, and we'll discuss both of these in a little bit of detail because both of these are being proposed as part of TIF District 1-9. Pay-as-you-go simply means that the developer or the entity that's creating the new value finances all of their own improvements, and then receives a reimbursement annually from tax increment as it's generated. General obligation tax increment bonds means that the city initiates a borrowing, installs the public improvements, and then uses the tax increment generated to pay debt service How is the Tax Increment Finance District created? So there's a couple of components here. The first is a development district. The development district is the statutory way that you are allowed to create tax increment districts. So first, you have a development district. In your case, it is coterminous with the boundaries of your city, and each time you have a new tax increment district, you update your development district, and that is what allows you to place a TIF district inside of the development district. So the TIF district itself is the plan that you have in front of you that says 1-9 on it. It contains geographic boundaries of the TIF district, the budget, the purpose, all of the statutory language, allowing you to establish the tax increment district. This public hearing is required. Prior to this public hearing, there was a 30-day notification to county and school district. They got a copy of the plan and were asked for comments. And then once the public hearing is held, and the Council takes action on the resolution, then the Tax Increment District is certified to the county. And it's about a 60-day process. We're in about the 60th day. This is an Economic Development TIF district, and the qualifications for this district are really, as in, as with most of the districts, they're very project-specific. So a project shows up and identifies a site and tells us about the type of project that they are, and that's how they are slotted into a certain type of Economic Development district. In this case, Lakeview Industries primarily meets the first three on this list, manufacturing or production of tangible personal property, warehousing, storage, and distribution, and research and development related to those activities. And there are some others as well. Telemarketing, tourism facilities, that can go in an Economic Development District, et cetera. This is the proposed boundary of the district. It isn't exact, as the land hadn't been, isn't plotted yet. I think that will be Outlet A. And it looks, I assume it looks somewhat like that. We'll have the exact description when we certify the district. And these are the assumptions that we used to draft the Tax Increment Financing District and the budget and the plan that's in your packet. So the developer's proposing the development of the site to include a new industrial manufacturing, warehousing building. The first phase of that development is proposed to be about 154,000 square feet, and anticipated to be completed in 2019. And there's some potential for additional future building plans to expand to a total of 233,000 square feet. These are the development assumptions that we used. These are important because these generate all of the numbers that we used to create the budget within the tax increment plan. So we made an assumption that all of the development would happen, although in two phases, but within the eight years of the district. Our assumption of $70 a square foot has been looked at by the Carver County Auditor appears to be reasonable. We have a small market value inflation assumption on the building itself of 1.5%. We show a 10% administrative retainage. That is the city's 10% to be used to pay administrative costs, engineering costs related to the TIF district, staff costs, filing tax increment financing reports, things such as that. The TIF eligible tax rate today, 122.965%. That remains the same through the life of the district. The first receipt of increment would be in 2021, based on completing construction project in 2019, assessing 1-1 of 2020, and generating tax increment in 2021. And the final receipt will be in 2028. That's nine total receipts. Got ahead of myself. This is the budget. So this is the budget that is in the TIF Plan 1-9. And again, we built this budget. It includes tax increment generated from both phases of the development. So we estimate roadway site improvements and preparation costs, other eligible improvements at about 1.396 million. Bond and pay-as-you-go note interest payments at 420,000, and admin expenses, that's that 10% at about 200,000, for a total budget of a little over $2 million. And the revenue side of the equation is equal to the cost side of the equation. Tax increment revenue estimated to be generated in the amount of $2,019,000. So lastly, on this page, so potential TIF obligations. Adoption of the TIF plan only provides the city with the authority to enter into future obligations, so really, this is just a planning document. It doesn't obligate the city to do anything right now. That will come when a development agreement is negotiated and considered by the city council. Adoption of the TIF plan only provides the city with the authority to enter into future obligations, so really, this is just a planning document. It doesn't obligate the city to do anything right now. That will come when a development agreement is negotiated and considered by the city council. The first proposed use of TIF is debt service related to a general obligation TIF bond proposed to be issued to fund Commerce Drive. And the second potential use of the remainder of the tax increment is a reimbursement to the developer on a pay-as-you-go basis for costs that they have incurred related to the development. And the final bond amount and the debt service and development agreement terms and all of those issues have yet to be worked out, but as we go through the process, those will be worked out. Bidding of Commerce Drive and those issues will be brought back to council for further That's TIF District 1-9. I'm happy to take questions.
So, I have one quick question. Typically, the TIF district is created and TIF is used with the but-for equation in mind. Are we comfortable that we've met all the but-for?
We are comfortable that we're working through the but-for analysis and that by the time you get to the development agreement, that we'll have more solid numbers and we will have worked through.
So, if we get to that point, obviously, we're at, we've worked through the but-for analysis, but in the process, that's what we're doing right now?
Right.
Okay.
When you consider the resolution related to the development agreement, those issues will be in that resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions, comments? Mr. Merrick? Mr. Harris?
The council might want to open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Good point. That's what it says right here. It says after. Okay. So, I will open the public hearing. Those wishing to address the city council should come forward and state their names and addresses for the record. After all comments are received, the public hearing will be closed, and no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. So, for the public hearing, does anyone have anything they'd like to share, comment, question? Do we have to keep it open for a little bit?
Why don't you ask if there's anybody in the room that has any interest in this project?
I think you just did.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Why don't you make sure there's nobody in the room that has any interest in the project?
I think you just did. Yeah, that was a beautiful tie, by the way. Brings out your eyes. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on the Lakeview Industries TIF district? So, barring someone else coming in, I think we're comfortable there. If there are any public comments, we'll address, but I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then moving forward, we will not hear issues, or excuse me, comments on this issue this evening.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now, holy cow, moving consent, that's this way. We are now to, we took nine points, no.
Make a motion. We're on the consent agenda, correct?
Uh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.5, 7.6, 9, or, and 7.13.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I forgot to vote. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Take care, guys. Thank you. We have taken 9.1 off. 9.2, Concept Plan and Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Trident Development. Ms. Erin Smith.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor and council, tonight, we are reviewing two processes for the redevelopment of 926 Street West. So, formerly the lens and bus garage, formerly my pillow, formerly several uses in the time that it's been in the city.
That's exciting. Are we waiting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, my slides will come back.
How's it going?
Good.
I like your necklace.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's not as cool as Larry's tie, but...
Thanks, Vicki.
Oh, here we are.
Tonight, the two topics for consideration is the concept plan is number one, so no formal action, provide feedback to the developer and staff on the project, and two is the comprehensive plan amendment. So, there's a proposed motion as part of the packet, re-guiding the property from low-density residential to high-density to allow for the project. So, thinking through the two processes, since they are independent of each other, the concept plan review is the planning commission and council's first look at a project, very conceptual in nature. There's a lot of unknowns in the project, so if either I or a member of the development team say, "I'm not sure right now," it's because we really aren't sure right now. And it's a time for the developer to pitch an idea for feedback on a project. It's not binding, just a good way for a project to get an initial first blush by the planning commission and council. The comprehensive plan amendment, on the other hand, is a pretty technical planning process. The city's comprehensive plan guides every property in Carver with best assumptions at the time of development of the plan. So, the current plan that we're working under right now was drafted in 2008, prior to the city acquiring the property for redevelopment. We're currently revising our comp plan with anticipated adoption of early 2019. So, currently, under the 2030 comp plan, the one that was drafted in 2008, the property is guided at low-density. So, this process would take a look at it and hopefully guide to high-density to allow for the project. This is a formal planning process. There is a resolution by the city council, and it must be submitted to the Met Council for their review. As part of the comprehensive plan amendment process, there's also a jurisdictional review. So, there's 13 surrounding jurisdictions that have a 60-day comment period on the project. So, we send out notice letting them know, "Hey, we're working on something related to our comp plan that's likely going to change. Do you have any thoughts, feelings on it?" We did not receive any comment related to the comprehensive plan amendment for 926 Street.
From 13?
Jurisdictions, yes. So, a timeline of the property, which I am pretty sure most of you are really familiar with. December 2015, the city acquired the property. In February of 2016, the planning commission instructs the planning, the city council instructs the planning commission to determine guiding principles for site development. November 2016, an RFP or a request for proposal was issued by the city, and submissions were due by January 30, 2016. January 30, 2016, the city received two proposals for redevelopment. One was a series of twin homes. The other was a senior living facility. May 1, 2017, the city selects Shingabee as the developer for the site, so that was a senior living facility similar to the one we're talking about tonight. April 2018, Shingabee partners with Trident Development. So, Trident Development is the project manager that will be moving the project through. And then, on August 30, the planning commission reviewed the concept plan and comprehensive plan amendment. We also held a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission meeting. We had six residents attend the meeting. I'll get to some of their feedback a little bit later in my presentation. And here we are in September 4, 2018, where the city council reviews the concept and comprehensive plan amendment. So, I mentioned that the planning commission was tasked with creating some guiding principles for development of the site. The planning commission came up with seven. They're on the screen now. There was a preference towards senior living at a moderate price point. Existing berm and trees were to remain. The building should be two stories. The appearance should look residential. Development should be complementary to surrounding property owners, and a garden area landscaping feature should be incorporated. So, these were the seven features that were used to critique the RFPs that were received by the city. So, getting into some project specifics about Trident's project, again, this is really concept level, very subject to change. So, 6th Street runs along the top of the property. Cindy, do you have your bearings?
I know exactly where this is. Just the concept looks so different.
Got it. Okay. So, I'm going to flash forward to some details, and then I'll go back. So, the proposed project right now is a two-story building. What was that?
She's mad at you for saying, "Get your bearings."
I know you always appreciate when they're...
She remembers the steamboats. Just kidding.
So, the two-story building that we're talking about tonight is roughly 70 units, a mix of 21 units of memory care, 49 assisted living. The property will include a common dining room, commercial kitchen, administrative offices, a wellness and fitness room, and an outdoor recreation area. So, I'm going to go back to the site plan now. So, you'll see the entrance to the proposed property is directly across from Lisle Wood Parkway. So, we've recognized that 6th Street is a collector in the city of Carver, so we want to limit the number of accesses that come off the street. So, limiting it to one, we feel is the most effective way to do that. The fire marshal has been really active in the planning review process, so working through details with him to make sure that the fire trucks can make that entrance, navigate the parking lot, as well as have access to the entire building will be flushed out throughout the planning process, the preliminary plat, as we get to know more details about the project. So, you'll see on the concept plan, several of the guiding principles that the planning commission determined are incorporated in the site. So, as part of the development, you can see the mature trees are largely staying from what we know right now. The berm will likely be staying from what we know right now. It's a two-story building, senior living. Check several of the boxes that the planning commission set when they developed the guiding principles. Members from the development team are in the room tonight. If you have more Trident-specific questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to work through any questions with you. Otherwise, this is a rendering of a project they recently did in Redwood Falls. So, the project in Carver likely won't look exactly like this, but it's a good example of what their two-story looks like today. And several senior projects that have been completed in the area were Trident projects. So, recent project locations include Fridley, Chaska, Edina, North St. Paul, Shakopee, Marshall, Princeton, Little Falls, Delano, St. Michael. The list goes on and on. They've been doing this for a long time in several communities. So, right now, there are some photos on the screen of previously developed sites that Trident has completed. If someone is watching at home and they want to keep up with this project, or they're interested in what's happening, this is a screenshot of the city website where the project page will be updated. So, under Development and Construction, there's a tab that's 926 Street West Redevelopment, the bus garage. I will do my very best to keep this updated as we work through the planning process for those who want to be engaged. I'm going to touch back on some of the neighborhood comments that were received on August 30. So, Roger Fink was here with the Trident Development Team, and then I walked through a really similar presentation to the one that I just gave you to give the neighboring property owners an idea of what the project might look like. So, a mailing went out to property owners within 350 feet of the proposed property, which is consistent with those who get notice for preliminary plats. So, it's the same group of people that will be active in the planning process. So, one of the residents that was here as part of the neighborhood meeting is actually an administrator at a senior living project, which was really fascinating. She gives some really good feedback that I necessarily wouldn't know about, just because I'm not working with this day-to-day. So, some of the concerns that we heard at the neighborhood meeting were related to sound. So, thinking about chillers on the property, so not only like a kitchen chiller, but also AC units, and how they're situated on the property with residential property owners adjacent. Same with a generator, so if at any time a generator would need to be used, the sound that could be generated from the generator. Another question that a lot of people had was lighting in the parking lot. So, wanting to make sure that the property keeps the residential feel, doesn't become an issue for people who are living in close proximity. Two of the property owners asked if there was a waiting list for this project already because they would like to maybe be considered to get on the list.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And then, we also discussed...
Cindy's all for it.
We also discussed some of the environmental concerns that we've learned about the site after the city acquired the property. So, we are currently working with Braun Intertec on cleanup of the site. So, as we work with Trident, we'll continue to get the site to a clean state where construction will be successful. So, again, that was the concept level, and the second piece of what I'm asking you to review tonight is the comprehensive plan amendment. So, on the left is the 2030 comprehensive plan that was drafted in 2008, prior to a lot of the work that has been done on this property. So, the city acquired it in 2015. So, the plan was completed in 2008, eight years prior, seven years prior, to when the city acquired the property. And guiding in the 2040 comprehensive plan, you can see in the circle, 2030 has it at low-density, 2040 has it to high. So, tonight, I'm asking you to review the concept plan, give feedback, general concerns, comments about the property, and then also review the comprehensive plan amendment. The planning commission held the required public hearing at the August 30 meeting related to the comprehensive plan amendment. No formal comment was received related directly to the public hearing.
So, no formal comment from the planning commission or from people at the...
So, no one from the public spoke directly to the comprehensive plan amendment. The planning commission had a really fantastic discussion about the project. It was over an hour long. So, they had a really thoughtful discussion, I think, gave the developer some really good ideas of what they would like to see on the property moving forward. So, again, tonight, discuss really general feedback for the developer, and then review the comprehensive plan amendment, which is, again, re-guiding the property from low-density residential to high-density residential.
Okay. So, first off, let's do, start with the concept plan. Obviously, you've given us an update. Developers are here. I'll open it up to the council. Does anyone have any questions, comments, suggestions for the developers that are here from Trident Development?
Can we go back to the site plan? So, we're talking about lighting the parking lot. I know that you just said that that was a concern for some of the nearby residents.
Yes.
Is that the plan, then, to have it lit? And do we have any mitigation for how that's going to be? Is it going to be just on the side? Because I see there's parking that backs up to, I guess, the west side.
Mm-hmm. So, on the site plan, it's pretty hard to see, but that is actually underground parking.
Okay.
So, directly closest to the west, likely won't have a ton of lighting in that area, but it is anticipated that the rest of the parking lot will be lit for safety reasons. Roger Fink with...
It has to be.
Right. Roger Fink with Trident spoke really specifically about the type of lights that they use. So, it's an LED fixture that points all of the light down, so it's not moving up or away from the unit. So, as we start to get into some of the more complex planning processes, we'll get an idea of where those lights might be and what some of the units might look like. So, the parking lot will be lit, but understanding it is a concern, we hope to work with the development team to create a plan that works for the neighboring property owners, too.
So, is there any chance of looking at having the decorative lighting that we have downtown, some of that up there?
Sorry. My name's Scott O'Brien. What was your question?
Hi. We have a lighting style in the downtown area, and just for some, having it kind of carry through the community, I was just curious if that was some type of lighting that could possibly be used.
Sure. We could explore that together.
That's fine. We typically have Luma sales do a lighting pollution study to find out how many lumens we're going to be generating at the edge of the property. And so, we do it on everyone because the residents in the building don't want a bunch of light shining into their window anymore than the neighbor across the street wants the lighting hitting them.
Except for you do have to have it safety, so families can come in and see the lights.
And for the record's sake, the parking on the west side of the building is covered parking. It's not underground. So, we're not going to be dropping down.
It's covered, not underground?
It's covered, not underground. Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I think my only comment, and I'm a little conflicted because I love the path around it, I love the idea of allowing the residents their, a good way to get their steps in and go around. However, to me, it looks like it bites into the berm rather significantly, kind of on that, what would be, I think, the southeast corner there. So, I worry about the potential for the longevity of that berm, because I know that that's important to have that buffer between the residents that are there in that property.
If you don't mind, I'll take that one.
Go ahead.
So, we've been working with Ryan Gil... So we've been working with Ryan Gil, the fire marshal, and he's been evaluating fire truck circulation on the property. And it's been identified that they will need access around the entire building. So the trail will likely double, not only as a walking trail for residents and family members, but also the fire truck access. So yes, I agree the berm might be cut into, but emergency service generally precludes the look of the berm.
Understood. And I guess I'm okay if the berm is cut into in terms of like more of a retaining wall versus it going away.
That's what we'll have to do, is build a retaining wall into the berm. And that's fine, too. Happens all the time.
I could work with you.
This is my 20th one of these, so we're-
You've heard it all.
Well, no, I mean-
No, you have.
So just for clarification's sake, or edification's sake, the parking thing and the access makes complete sense. The amount of trips typically, we're adding covered parking here at this facility. A lot of facilities, we might have eight, 10, 12 covered parking stalls in a building that might have 80 residents. The acuity level that you see typically in a setting like this is such that the residents don't drive. You know, I think in Shakopee, we have eight garage stalls, four being used for storage. One has a car in it, and the other three are just sort of sitting there, so it's not- But the main amount of traffic generation comes from family members stopping by, and then maybe some doctors, physicians, nurses coming in, and employees, correct? Yes, sir.
Speaking of traffic, are we planning on any different type of traffic controls? Having that turn coming in there, and then with Sunny Ridge right across, or is it gonna remain as-is?
So there will be a stop sign coming out of the Trident Development project. Andrew, I might ask you to chime in.
And I guess we haven't anticipated to need stop signs on Sixth Street, but with this just being a concept, there'll be more information made available that we will review as we go through the process to understand how many trips they're generating, whether it designates turn lanes or other, some sort of other traffic control. It's not anticipated to need any traffic control, though, on Sixth Street.
It's not gonna have any more traffic than my pillow had.
No.
No. Or at 3:00 a.m.
Or a bus garage.
3:00 a.m. A lot of seniors going out at 3:00 a.m.
Not for the right reasons, usually.
Good point. I could work with you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Have you ever built any of these facilities this close to a residential area?
Yes.
Okay. So you're able to mitigate noise and things like that?
Yes, ma'am. We don't generate much noise.
I was thinking of like your air conditioning units, makeup areas, whatever.
Yep. We have a building in Shakopee that's near the Catholic Elementary School, and it is very similar to this. It's bordered by housing on two of the foursides. And it's actually a larger building. It's a three-story building. And I know a lot about the building, because I live in Shakopee, and so I'm there quite a bit. And I don't think we've ever had a complaint about noise.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else? All right. I think satisfying the concept plan comments. Did you have something else you wanted to add? Kind of raised your hand.
No, but if you're finished with concept, I'll ask you to review the comprehensive plan amendment.
I feel like you're assuming I wasn't gonna get there. That was exactly where I was going, that I would actually entertain any questions or comments regarding the comprehensive plan amendment, which fits within our 2040 comprehensive plan and ultimately totally makes sense. So does anyone have any questions, comments, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion and adopt Resolution 139-18 approving a comprehensive plan amendment, regiding property at 926th Street West from low-density residential to high-density residential.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? I'm excited. I think this is a great project, and I think I've done enough of the research to understand that you have done this a number of times. And I'm actually very confident, and Aaron and I've talked a little bit, but I'm very confident that you'll actually foresee some of the issues that you've had in other places, and head those off, because you have a very good reputation of being a very good neighbor. And I think you're not gonna sell or fill a unit with somebody that doesn't want to be there, hence the lights, the sound, so I'm very confident that you'll have the ability to do that. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up. We are now moving on to the Parks Commission appointments. Mr. Merrick? I think I can take it from- No, you go. Go, go. I just, I errand you.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, the city council at the work session tonight interviewed Jody Edstrom and Mackenzie Tempt for the Parks Commission seats. We have two spots open, alternate one and alternate two, so we'll be looking for a separate motions for appointment for alternate one, and then a separate motion for alternate two with whoever the council would elect to appoint to those positions.
So what you're looking for is two separate motions, not one motion appointing two. Just making sure that I understand that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone want to discuss? I was massively impressed with both of them. I think it's nice to have, A, new blood, and B, such interested new blood. I was really, really-
Yeah. I'm glad they both are gonna get a spot.
I was gonna say, I was impressed by both of them. I'm glad we have two slots open for two candidates.
So there's a motion to appoint to the first alternate position.
I'd make a motion to appoint Jody Edstrom to the first alternate position.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe. I apologize.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. So there's a motion and a second. All in, sorry. Any further discussion? Great choice. I agree. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mackenzie Tempt to the second alternate position.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? Great choice as well. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on, just, we've had a little disjointed agenda this evening. Just wanna make sure that I'm covering everything that we had planned to cover this evening. Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add, Aaron? Okay, all right. I think amendments. All right. Anyone, Councilmember Monroe?
I would just invite everyone to come to Steamboat Days this weekend. It'll be lots of fun. And I think Courtney wants to make a statement.
Hey, does any, hey, just out of curiosity, do we know who the grand marshal's gonna be?
Nope, we don't. It's gonna be a great big surprise.
I know who it is.
Who's the grand marshal gonna be?
It's Cindy Monroe.
Is it Cindy?
Oh, yeah.
It is. It's Cindy Monroe.
Oh, congratulations!
Is there a Kenny Quigley Monroe?
Kenny Quigley Monroe.
He gonna be riding with you?
I sure hope he's riding with me. He may be pulling the wagon with all the candy in it.
All right. Anything else?
Hmm, no, I can't think of anything else.
Johnson?
So two quick things. I have a work commitment that I need to catch a flight at our, about, I would need to leave here at 7:00 o'clock the evening, the night of our next meeting, which is Monday night, September 17th.
It's my anniversary.
So that you can get home to Mickey. I would-
She doesn't, that's not what she wants.
Oh, sorry.
She wants him at a meeting.
Yes. Sorry, Mickey. I am wondering if we could start the meeting at 5:30 that evening.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion that on Monday night, September 17th, we have our regular council meeting start at 5:30.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, and a second by Councilmember Monroe. Now we open it to further discussion. Anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just have one question. I have no problem moving the meeting ahead. Do we think that having it at 5:30 will allow residents enough time to get here? Or is 6:00 going to be maybe a better time for people coming from work?
For a council meeting?
Starting the meeting.
We typically, I'm more than comfortable with 5:30.
If everyone else says that's fine. I just wanna make sure that people who are working can get here.
Ryan? Can you make it at 5:30? Okay.
Trade him well.
So any other comments, questions, concerns? Motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's your first thing. You said you had two.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The second thing is the fun one. I-
The what?
The fun one.
Thank you. Yes.
The fun one. I would like to challenge the members of the Steamboat Days Volunteer Committee to a water fight.
You would like the council or just yourself?
No, on behalf of the, on behalf, no. On behalf of the city council, I would like to challenge the Steamboat Days Volunteer Committee to a council versus volunteer, Steamboat Days Volunteer Committee water fight.
Glenn has not won in a few years.
We haven't played, we didn't do it last year.
Glenn?
Careful.
Just kinda let us down a little bit. Do we consider any specific members of the fire department as members of the city, per se?
I think we do.
Okay, good, good. I just wanna make sure that we get that out there, because I guarantee you, they're gonna cheat again.
Oh, my goodness.
No, I don't think they, I don't think-
I mean, I'm all behind your challenge. I don't-
Yeah, I think it'll be fun.
I feel like we can do it, though. I'm confident in us and our ability to recruit between now and Friday.
Okay, as long as we can recruit, because Glenn is killing us.
It's uplifting for you.
So that's my challenge.
All right. I'm gonna, should we just ask the Steamboat Days Committee to maybe, maybe-
Get back to us?
Agree or disagree, maybe publicly, on your Facebook page?
Sure.
Outstanding.
Sure.
All right. You said two things. Is that it?
That's it. That's it. I'm good. Thank you.
Mock?
Aaron, HPC meeting, do we have one coming up, or? We do, yes. We will. Okay, so then we'll have a meeting next Tuesday evening?
Correct.
Okay.
Henry?
Everybody show up at Steamboat Days.
Oh, can I have one more thing? I'm sorry.
Apparently-
Apparently.
Councilmember Johnson has an addition that she forgot to add to.
This'll be quick. So just, we had a planning commission meeting last week. We have a planning commission this week. And the planning commission members have been knocking it out of the park. In August, we had four meetings that they were requested to attend. We have one special meeting at least this month. There's so much stuff going on, I anticipate there'll potentially be more stuff coming down the pike. So just a huge kudos to them.
Thank you very much, planning commission.
Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor. And council, I do have a few things-
You're welcome.
Related to the Steamboat Days festival. Just wanna let the council know that I'm gonna be out Friday and most of the day Saturday, attending a wedding out of town, so Brian's gonna be helping along with his team, coordinating some of the logistics that I've helped out in the past. And so if there is an issue, you can still contact me, but there might be a little chain to get to Brian. And if you need to connect with Brian immediately on something, feel free to reach out to him on Friday as well.
Do we need your permission? Like, because we're not supposed to talk to staff without your permission? Is this publicly your permission?
I'm giving you my permission.
Thank you.
And the rest of the council, excuse me.
Okay, Brian?
To talk about Steamboat Days.
Not about Brent, about Steamboat Days.
For the record, I always check with Brent.
A couple other real pieces. We're planning on paving tomorrow for the 2017 improvement project, so weather permitting, Wednesday and likely part of Thursday. And then related to city hall construction, as you can probably tell, it's a pretty tight site. And we're getting to the point in the construction process where they're gonna start bringing materials or start- They're gonna bring them in in stages so that they don't have a big surplus, but they'll still need some room. So we're looking at, or working on two areas. One, they'll have their construction dumpster right next to their construction trailer over by the former fire station. But there'll also be some staging, more than likely some brick, et cetera, on the Third Street West parking lot. So that'll be closed while they're staging those materials. We're gonna work on putting some construction matting or plywood down, so the final lift of that blacktop is done. It's just, there's a whole number of sites looked at. Frankly, these are-
Wait, wait, one second. The parking lot on Third Street's gonna be closed over the weekend?
No, after Steamboat Days.
After Steamboat Days. Gotcha, sorry.
Thank you.
After Steamboat, after Steamboat Days, it'll have whatever their construction material is. We just didn't think it would be frankly safe to have that material out there after Steamboat Days for people to accidentally run into, et cetera. And then the area by the construction trailer, by the old fire station, will also be fenced, because there's been, I wanna say rerod, but that's not right.
Rebar.
Rebar. You know, rerod. Giving in to what every public services worker thinks I know about construction.
Brian right now, he's like, "He's my boss."
Three-quarter inch rerod.
We now have permission to call Brian whenever we need to.
Whenever we need.
So you'll see those, the fence, we're hoping will go up prior to Steamboat Days. The staging in the parking lot will occur after Steamboat Days.
What time is the road closing on Friday for Steamboat Days?
So there's not an exact science to it, but typically it happens around 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon. There's a lot of communication at the time between the chair and the city about when that happens. Typically, Brian and his crew put out the barricades, and then whenever they get the AOK, then the barricades go across. Is that fair, Brian? Rerod.
Three-quarter?
Larry, do you have anything you'd like to add? We haven't heard from you kinda all night, and you got all dressed up and look good. All right. Good, good. All right, I have nothing. Let entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Mock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, yeah. No, thank you. I thought you guys were hiding it on me.
Well, we are having a hard time on this.
Oh, no.